Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Speaker fifteen, Chitanda Tillman. Moving on to speaker number seventeen, Rodney Stevan. As he approaches the microphone, Mr. President, I'd just like to note that the individuals that are noted on the speakers' list regarding the Magic Johnson Britscape, they will not be addressing the board today.
Thank you. My name is Rod Estevan. I'm the Education Policy Analyst for Access Living. You have a copy of our report, a thirty-three-page report on your budget. The first issue, to the President's question to Tim Colley. Access Living did not claim that there was an aggregate reduction in funding for special education. Access Living is raising the issue of your waiting system. We have issues with this waiting system, and we intend on having a discussion with Barbara Bird Bennett about it. We will talk, and we have talked, with the special ed director about this. This is a, you are going forward with a student-based budgeting system that for a subgroup of students with disabilities will not provide them with more funds to their school. We are talking general ed dollars, not special ed dollars. This is a problem. Second issue, to the charter school issue. You will see that the charter schools for special ed received a twenty-five percent increase in teacher's special education reimbursement. That's driven by the equal formula based on the Gates Compact. It's also based on reimbursement for the pension fund issues, and, in some cases, for social security. There, according to Tim, these numbers are all driven by increases in students in charters. There is no commensurate increase in special education students in charter schools. And you can ask Andrew if you want to talk about that. CPS could not afford the Gates Compact in its current situation. You're in a very difficult situation, and this is a fiscal stressor, and I think you need to get to it. Now to the big question, and I think that Dr. Benin got to it. The pension solution will not solve your fiscal problems.
Mr. Stevan, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
The best deal that I have seen would not equal the proposal on May thirty-first that the Board and the Chicago Teachers Union tried to pass in the General Assembly for Pension Holiday. That was a forty-four percent reduction in payments. There's no deal out there right now that will look as good as that. So, we're gonna have to look at property taxes, and we're gonna have to look at this cap. Our property tax rate is way too low compared to suburban and average in Cook County. We need to look at this. Dr. Benin has dealt with this issue in Evanston, where they actually wanted to go after Northwestern's tax-exempt status and tax their property. And their property tax rate is far higher than Chicago's, because their schools were sucking it up, too. So, we need to look at everything. It all needs to be on the table, not just the pension fund and not state dollars. And by the way, you will look on this, and you will see a funny chart that is created of Chicago's relative property tax rates. That was being passed out on the General Assembly floor last year, along with a flyer telling people, "Don't give handouts to Chicago. Don't give handouts to CPS, 'cause they're not carrying their own weight."
Thank you, Mr. Stevan.
This is a political consequence.
Our next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is speaker number twenty, please. Adina Linker, followed by speaker number twenty-one, Okema Lewis, and then speaker number thirty-five, Reba Brown.
My name is Adina Linker. I'd like to start with a small audio clip. The collective bargaining agreements are settled. There's a moratorium on school closures for the next five years, and it is the beginning of a new school year in a few short months. There will be a beginning, and a beginning, and a beginning. It is a new beginning. We are putting the past behind us. It's time to turn the page. To the Board, I'd like to say what has happened this year is not done. What is settled is that this inequitable plan does not work. There is a moratorium on enrichment opportunities, including physical education, art, music, and library time. There's been a moratorium on opportunities for creative learning and extracurricular activities. The full day is not rigorous. It's ridiculous. There is a new beginning. The destructive actions of this appointed Board have opened a Pandora's Box of activism, advocacy, and agitation. It's a beginning that, thanks to social media, has allowed community activists to start to unite, share data, educate voters, and expose corruption and wasted resources. It's a beginning of students demanding a quality seat at the table that dictates their future. The editing of videos of Board of Ed meetings will not silence them. It's the beginning of new voices which will no longer just be agitated, but rather, we will be even more resolute to oust this Board once and for all. You can put the past behind you. We will link arms, and we will march through your safe passages. You can turn the page. We will read it nightly until this Board is history.
Thank you. Our last call for Okema Lewis, please.
Good day, everyone. My name is Okema Lewis. I'm a Title I City of Chicago resident, and in commemoration of this historical date, the fifty-year anniversary of the March on Washington led by Dr. King and millions of others to address the inequality of jobs, housing, and education, and the terms of Roman eight and twenty-eight, for my personal actions of support, I'm gonna piggyback off the statements of Board members Hind, Zop, and CEO Barbara Bird Bennett. Clear expectations define definitive actions that are consistent and clearly communicated with specific regard to parents. Every year for the last ten years, this Board has allowed parents to meet, and the law has stated they must vote to how they use their federal dollars that come in from their working poor income and the working poor community. This year, for the first time in July, all voting of the money that had been placed in categorical places, just like you're doing with your Board report, was moved and put into a miscellaneous account. Parents don't meet in the summer that much, even though the money is supposed to support parents of failing students, and that's your population in the summer. Every Title I school right now that has money left because they did not get to spend it or use it will be going back as of August thirty-first, because for some reason, and I'm sure you're not aware of everything that goes on, that's why I'm bringing it to your attention, the money was put into miscellaneous accounts. In other words, they voted to buy computers at Simeon. They're trying to put them in place so they can have a place for parents to use the parent portal. They want parents to have access to resume hunting and things that will help them for what you said you want parents to have: clear expectations and defined responsibility. But those computers aren't gonna be ordered. There are other schools. Bogan, their money is sitting in miscellaneous, nine thousand dollars they was to help parents.
Ms. Lewis, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
My focus today was a different level, but as you spoke, you inspired me. We don't have to agree, but we do have to be on one accord for what takes place with regard to parents whose income is affected when they fill out a school lunch form, and it says, "I don't have enough money to do what you're asking me to do." I have to pay my rent, my light, my phone, my gas, and then you want school funds to support your expenses while you take care of what you need to do. There are many activities parents want to have take place.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
But the voting?
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
I will conclude, but I ask that you consider what's gonna happen in three days at the schools that did not get to spend their parent funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, is speaker thirty-five, Reba Brown, followed by speaker number twenty-two, Mark Pesavishki, followed by speaker thirty, Adam Becker.
Good morning, all. Good morning, Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett. My name is Reba Boots Brown, and I stand before you to address the issue that myself and my child are not treated well and welcomed into my community school. Firstly, one concern is that nine thousand dollars may go back at Bogan High School because parents are not supported to rightfully utilize our Title I funds as an existing parent advisory council in which I chair. Among incidents that took place, and those in February and March in particular, of which you, Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett, were notified and addressed, to date still withstand issues lingering around the matter. As a result, I have been placed in a very uncomfortable situation with administration and staff. Based on the incident that took place in March with my son, it has created a stressful situation for him, which is potentially going to have a negative impact on his academic success. He was in an honors program last year. As a District 299 Title I parent, I do not appreciate the maltreatment of our children in challenging situations at such a critical time in their lives when they most need guidance, rigorous academic instruction, and support to include practical and decent intervention and proper conflict resolution skill building. And final, I am requesting a personal meeting with you to discuss the issues at hand, whereas I do not wish to make all of them public at this time as of yet. Thank you for your attentiveness to this matter. I did get an email from you previously. God bless you.
Thank you. Last call, please, for speaker twenty-two, Mark Pesavishi. Last call for Adam Becker, speaker number thirty. Moving on to speaker number twenty-six, please, Abby Linnenberger, followed by speaker thirty-four, Dennis O'Neil, and then speaker thirty-six, Yolanda Thomas.
Good afternoon. My name is Abby Illenberger. I'm with Grassroots Collaborative. Today, you will approve a budget. On Monday, students started school under this new budget. The budget you're ready to approve stripped music and art classes, counselors, librarians, folks, the students went to school on Monday to find these programs cut, some of their favorite teachers gone, and critical resources like college and career counselors missing. Why? You've laid out your argument. Your argument is that you have no choice, that there is no money. I'm here to say that many of us, and a growing number of us across this city, don't buy it. There are other choices. There are both immediate and long-term revenue solutions. I'm gonna put forward three. A couple have been mentioned already. Number one, renegotiate the toxic interest rate swap deals that CPS is engaged in. I know we've stood here before asking you to do this. CPS continues to send millions to big Wall Street banks each year. This year, you will send thirty-six million dollars to Bank of America, Goldman Sachs, and other big banks in toxically high-interest rate swap deals. Since their creation, these deals have drained hundreds of millions of dollars from our children's classrooms. There is a courageous choice to make here. Go after those dollars. We ask you to sit down with those banks and renegotiate the deals and bring that money back to our schools. Number two, request the declaration of a TIF surplus. There are four hundred and fifty-seven million dollars in TIF funds sitting in accounts across this city. Instead of forcing these devastating cuts on our schools, we ask you to request that the mayor declare a TIF surplus and put these funds into our schools for this school year.
Ms. Illenberger, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
I will.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo the advocating for a fair tax system to address our long-term revenue situation with the state, and I'd like to conclude by saying that today, instead of voting on a budget that hurts our children, we ask you to stand up to the mayor, stand up to the banks, and stand with our city's children. Please go after those funds and put them back in our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Illenberger. Our next speaker, please. Speaker thirty-four, Dennis O'Neil.
Good afternoon, President Vitale, and the members of the Board, and Dr. Bird Bennett. My name is Dennis O'Neil. I just have a simple question for you. It sounds simple to ask, but it's not probably very simple to answer. Standing here fifty years after the March on Washington to the date, roughly sixty years after Brown versus Board of Ed, and almost forty-seven years to the date after Alexander Polikoff filed in federal district court, Cato et al. versus CHA, I would ask you if you think it was a good idea roughly the decade between two thousand and, say, two thousand and ten to segregate all of the poor black children in one of the largest redevelopments of public housing under HOPE six in the country, near one of the largest urban public universities, the University of Illinois at Chicago. Do you think that's a good idea? That's our neighborhood school. It's called John M. Smith Elementary, and I would really like to work with CPS to craft a long-term, comprehensive solution to the problem with education in our community. The biggest line item for revenue in your budget, as Mr. Colley pointed out or showed in his slide, is property tax revenue. CPS is driving property taxpayers out of our community. Just received an email recently, somebody moving from University Commons. We would like to, the mayor is quoted in today's Sun Times saying that if you have a political disagreement, deal with it in a political fashion. Mr. Vitale, we met with you with two of our elected representatives, Alderman Solis and Alderman Ballser, in February. I thought we had agreed upon a follow-up meeting in June or July. It's now the end of August, so could we get that meeting scheduled, please?
Anytime you want to schedule it, I'll be there.
I think, I know that Stacey Raker has contacted CPS a number of times.
I have a block meeting.
No, I understand. But we'd like to get that meeting, follow-up scheduled as soon as possible. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker number thirty-six, Yolanda Thomas, followed by speaker number forty-one, Noreen Gutencast, followed by speaker forty-two, Jackson Potter, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Yolanda Thomas, and I am a proud grandparent of two Chicago International Charter School students. CISC gave my grandchildren a foundation for school. That was their first introduction to school, was to charter school. There is also a service connected to the school, which we call the Asthma Van, which saved my grandson's life. He was a chronic asthmatic. His doctor that treated him is here today. Dr. White, she helped get him to the point of where he is now. He is in urban prep school. He's doing great, and I just wanted to thank you all for bringing the charter schools to our communities. Their mother works for the Safe Passage Community, which watches over the children going back and forth to school. She really loves it, and I just wanted to say that we are our children's role models, not the gangs, not the drugs, and not the jails. And we have to be a part of the change as opposed to the protests. And when you become a part, then your children look at you different, and the community look at you different. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of the CPS services.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker number forty-one, Noreen Gutencast.
Good afternoon to everybody who's here today. I'm a former Whittier School teacher. In April, CPS removed the Whittier School principal, who had the support of the local school council, and they did with this without consultation, notice, or the agreement of Whittier's elected representatives. Whittier School has suffered another blow from CPS and from this Board, which was handpicked by the mayor and does not represent the children of Chicago. I guess this is the community management that Ms. Quazo referred to earlier today, making decisions for neighborhood schools that are against the wishes of the parents. In the space of fifteen hours, from Friday, August sixteenth at six p.m. to Saturday, August seventeenth at ten a.m., CPS demolished the Whittier Fieldhouse, which was known as La Casita, with no input from or notice to the parents, teachers, or staff, or the elected LSC representatives. This fieldhouse sheltered a library and a community center and offered classes to both parents and children. In the 2010 asbestos inspection report, which is on the CPS website, asbestos was found to be present in the Whittier Fieldhouse. Yet, the building was knocked down without any protections for the workers, 'cause I was there and I saw it, or the community. And as we speak, the children are playing at recess on the playground outside of where the fieldhouse was knocked down. Today, you, none of you who were democratically elected by parents in Chicago are going to vote yes on a budget that adds eighty million dollars in funding to privatize schools and that reduces spending on traditional schools by a hundred and sixty-five million.
Ms. Gutencast, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Whittier, like many schools, is left facing the following: no air conditioning or inadequate air conditioning in up to twelve classrooms, none in the science room, art room, counselor room, and cafeteria, no music class, no library or librarian, half of an art position, and loss of a special ed teacher leaving our school out of compliance with special ed requirements. Parents and community members in Pilsen and across the city are left wondering, what, if any, is your commitment to their children?
Thank you, Ms. Gutencast. Our next speaker, please. Speaker forty-two, Jackson Potter, followed by speaker number forty-four, Rosemary Vega, followed by speaker forty-five, Velina Miller, then forty-seven, Jartisian Mitchell, and speaker fifty, Janine Logan, please.
Good afternoon. I wanted to take my limited time to ask you to reconsider the role and emphasis being placed not only on charter schools, but the whole framework of choice and incubation. We heard from Rod Estevan from Access Living that student-based budgeting is exacerbating the austerity imposed and inflicted on our neighborhood traditional schools. I think it would behoove the Board to bring Tim Colley and Ginger Ostrow back up and ask them specifically about the sped funds that Rod mentioned. That's a critical point that's been missing in the discussion so far. CPS is already in the process of expanding alternative schools, military schools, IB and STEM programs. There's a lot of change and money being spent. Now's not the time for charter expansion. I realize there's a legal obligation, but we need to mitigate the inherent bias that's currently in the RFP process and delay and reframe that process. So, for example, in years past, people have had the opportunity to submit proposals for performance schools, expanding traditional neighborhood models. In this year's process is exclusively charters. Your own district website says, "We're seeking teachers, administrators to respond to the RFPs with proposals that demonstrate the capacity to run high-quality new charter schools." Why at the exclusion of choice? Is this really you're giving parents an option, or are you forcing their hand into picking charters at the exclusion of their other options? I would argue the latter. I also want to caution against this, the aggressive and expensive advertising blitz that we see at charters. I live in the twelfth ward. I'm getting mail constantly from Horizon charters. Is the money you're giving through student-based budgeting actually being used for instructional purposes? Is it going to admin salaries disproportionately? Is it being used for advertising?
Mr. Potter?
I'll conclude.
Thank you.
What about nepotism in the contractor process? We know that high bidders without competitive bids are getting awarded contracts in UNO schools and now at Concept and Horizon schools. So, I just ask that you reconsider, please question Tim and Ginger about those things before you conclude today, and reconsider the timeline and process. I would argue, why not restart the RFP process and allow other options to submit their proposals? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Our next speaker, then, please. Rosemary Vega, last call. Moving on to the last call for Velina Miller. Last call for speaker forty-seven, Jartisian Mitchell. Moving on to speaker fifty, Janine Logan. As she approaches, then, the next speakers will be speaker fifty-one, Nellie Cotton, followed by speaker fifty-two, Elizabeth Brown, speaker fifty-seven, Nicholas Mann, followed by speaker fifty-eight, Carolyn Beluky.
Good afternoon. My name is Janine Logan, and I'm actually a proud parent of our Perspectives Charter School of Technology. And I would just like to say that I'm actually from Kentucky.
Ma'am, could you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry. I'm actually from Kentucky, so we were new to Chicago a couple of years ago, and our experience has been with our charter school. And what I would like to say is I do have a success story with our charter school, because my two sons, one is a junior in college. He graduated from the School of Technology, and I just had one graduate as an incoming freshman to a college here. So, our school, you know, we're in the community, and we are the School of Technology, and the reason why I actually got into the school was, for me, it was for safety. And lord and behold, for the whole six years that my kids were there, I can say that they kept my kids safe, and the level of education was, you know, we lacked a little bit of things, but they made up in overall, and I have two graduates of our school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Last call for Nellie Cotton.
First, I'd like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to teach my children an invaluable civics lessons today. They stand in solidarity with all the students for public education and protest Ram's austerity. There's all kinds of spending on new initiatives in a time when the district can't manage what it has. There's twelve million for new STEM and IB programs, while cutting from our high schools the following teachers: fifty math positions, thirty science, ninety English, thirty-seven history and social studies; twenty million for the no-bid Supes contract. Communication has doubled in three years from nine to eighteen. There's sixty face positions, and this amuses me, as everyone knows that CPS does not engage family and communities. If it did, it would know to support our children, not close schools, say no to charters, say no to Ram's privatization plan. Then, there's the six million in portfolio despite CPS claims of no school closings for five years. All this as our children are forced to sacrifice neighborhood schools, and we grovel for any little bit of funding. Stop punishing our kids and our teachers. Stop putting the onus back on Springfield, pension reform. These teachers pay their part. They start looking for real solutions: TIPS, graduate income taxes, et cetera. Cut the wasteful spending where it starts, and it starts right here at one twenty-five South Clark Street.
Hello, Board. Hello, Board. My name's Liz Brown, and normally, I really don't expect this Board to hear, really hear, anything that anyone from the community says. But a few days ago, the Board Secretary called me to ask what I was gonna say. I thought, wow, maybe this is the moment. So, this week, Ms. Zop said CPS had no school privatization plan. Really, Ms. Zop, really? Fifteen new charter schools opened this month. We've got a total of a hundred and thirty charters now, while CPS over the last ten years or so closed a hundred and fifty traditional schools. Close a traditional school, open a charter, sounds like a plan to me. And now, you're requesting more charters. I agree with Jackson Potter, who said, "You know what? Open up." If you're serious, this isn't a privatization plan, it is time to open up that proposal, RFP, to all school models, not just charters. So, yeah, you're gonna give eighty million more to charters and a hundred and sixty-five mil less to public schools, and those public schools, of course, educate all children, and yet, a Chicago Tribune survey just a year or two ago found that over seventy percent of Chicagoans do not support charters in our town. This is your plan. This is not our plan. Finally, Mr. Vitale, on the SCORP, on the School Quality Rating Policy, today, let's talk about students and how this does affect students. You said it's not just all testing. I just added it up, because I just got this today. Nobody else had it. Elementary schools, sixty-five percent of their rating is testing. Sixty-five percent.
Ms. Brown, excuse me.
I'm with you. So, forty percent in high schools is testing. So, don't say that testing isn't going to drive and narrow our curriculum further than it already is. The more we test students...
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
...the less educated they become. Please stop this.
Our next speaker, please. Nicholas Mann, followed by speaker fifty-eight, Carolyn Beluky, and then speaker fifty-nine, Frances Newman, and the last speaker, speaker sixty, Natasha Dunn.
I would say, good afternoon. Hope you had a good morning, but that would be a lie. I hope you had a terrible morning. Hope if you went to Starbucks, they messed up your order, and your dog or cat or whatever messed up your carpet. And I say that because you guys never seem to amaze me. You closed fifty schools, and then you fire thousands of teachers, student workers, and you think that's not how low you could go. You go even lower by going in at six o'clock on a Friday night and demolishing a community-run center and a library called La Casita up in Whittier. You did that in the cover of darkness, without letting them know anything. You came up with some phony order. They said they had asbestos in their building, but didn't bring the proper utensils to contain that asbestos. So, a gust of wind comes up as you're tearing down the building, and great, everyone has cancer. Congratulations. And you do this, and pretty much you do this because you really don't care about students. If you cared about students, they would already have a library. And mind you that these parents, these courageous parents that sat in in this building and got this library made and fought for this library, with books donated, not out of your pockets, but around from the city of Chicago, places like Chicago State University, even Purdue University Kiamet up in Hammond, Indiana, their student organizations donated all these books, no cost to you, but you're just gonna say, "Hey, we're just gonna tear it down everywhere anyway, and we're gonna put up a basketball court and a soccer field." And they still don't have a library there. You know what that tells me? Not only is a racist action, not only have you neglect and reneged on the agreement that your predecessor... that your predecessor, Ms. Bennett, had agreed, I, I'm concluding, that your predecessor had agreed to not tear down this school, but also it's a cowardly action. It's a cowardly action. And it tells me that you do not care about these kids. So for every parent that cares about their kids, that's sitting in this audience right now, even your friends, that this Board is not going to help you, is not going to care about your kids. We got to do it ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Our next speaker, please.